The city of Sunnyside for September 24, 2018. Roll call. I'm here, Julia Hart. We'll start there. Because I'm on the top of the list. Francisco Guerrero. Mr. Jim Restucci.
Here.
Mr. Dean Boersma.
Present.
Mr. Craig Hicks.
Here.
Mr. John Henry.
Here.
And Mr. Ron Sturmlehr.
Here.
And I'll go back and say Deputy Mayor Francisco Guerrero. Here.
Here.
Okay. And present with us also this evening are members of the staff. So at this time, if Nathan Gill would step up and give us justification. And if you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we are glad to be here tonight. God, we ask that once again you would give our City Council your wisdom. God, that they would make decisions that influence and impact our community and our youth. Father, we once again call on you to give us peace and calmness and just your presence in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. This time, I believe we have a new employee introduction. Mr. City Manager, I believe you have come right up here.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think, go ahead.
With your permission, I'll turn the floor over to Elizabeth and our new employee.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, I am pleased to have you meet Victoria Hernandez. She comes to us with eight years' experience in the HR field, working at Inspire. So she's used to 1,200 employees versus our 150 regular employees. So she has already hit the ground running and has already started whipping things into shape. So I'm very, very pleased to have her. And obviously, it takes one hat off of my head a little bit because I'm still working with her very closely. So Victoria, this is the council. I'm super excited and just ready to talk everything on that. Anybody who's been.
Excellent.
You're welcome to come up and shake hands and say hi.
Welcome to shake hands with everybody.
Meet you again. Nice to meet you.
Here, I'm going to give you a welcome to Sunnyside. So you wear that when you come to work every day. Yes.
Again.
All right. Well, welcome, Victoria. We hope you enjoy your job and stay with us a while.
For what?
Yeah, everybody. Thank you. Well, we were going to, okay. This one and this one. I would like to make some changes to the agenda for this evening, hopefully without objection, moving the executive session to follow item I-5, item five. And also to request amend the agenda to include items 3F and 3G as added on this today. So without objection, are there any change, any? And also, just want to make note of the fact that the Miss Sunnyside Court, the new court wasn't here, the old court was here. So they went home and they're all coming together next time. So they're not here this evening. But without objection, make those changes to the agenda.
No objections.
Any objections? No? Then so we will make that so. All right. And, okay. And at this time, we have unscheduled appearances by citizens. Citizens are advised that they must limit their remarks to the council to three minutes and that the items presented may be referred by the council to staff for review and/or additional information for presentation to the council at future council meetings. And somebody will, up here, will give you kind of a heads up when you're getting close to your three minutes, so you don't go over. Try to keep the council meeting rolling at a productive rate. So at this time, if there's anyone unscheduled appearances by citizens, we'd have those step If there are none, we'll move on to consent agenda. So is there any objection to making a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I had a question on one of the voucher items.
Okay.
Item 2B3. There's a claim number 94954 for music service fee. I noticed we've been paying for the music for downtown, but we haven't had any music. Is there, is the item broken or is it not functioning properly? I'm not quite sure what's going on with that because we're still paying for it, obviously. So I'm kind of curious what's going on with the equipment.
Madam Mayor, with your permission.
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero, what item was that?
Taskman 3, 2B3.
2B3 and what page or?
Page 10.
Claim number?
Page 10, claim number 94954.
I think sometimes you hear music. Could just be the people in my head, too. I'm sure.
Madam Mayor, I know what this is about. I'm just not sure why we're doing anything during this summer at all. I'm going to have to check in on that. So I'm assuming it's we're paying for the radio broadcasts that aren't happening.
But is it downtown speakers? I know they, when we did the downtown development, there were speakers installed. And you know, at one point, they were talking about removing, moving the equipment from somewhere, relocating it. I wonder if that ever happened.
No, it did not. We were actually talking about moving it down to City Hall because the chamber had no longer possessed that building. And that all that, all that equipment is up in the upstairs of that corner building. I can't remember, it's now the insurance, or not insurance, but investment.
Investment. Mr. Hernandez is.
Hernandez. And I don't know, that never happened. We talked about moving it down downtown or down to City Hall. And there was some cost involved in that. It's supposed to be hardwired and it never got done. So we left it there. And then we were doing that, but I'm not sure what happened with the people that were supposed to be putting that out. We'll just have to check on that and find out why it's not going on.
Okay.
So.
So I have an objection paying for it, just if you can follow up with it?
Yes. And the reason I asked is make sure it wasn't because we also pay for the rights to play music. I wanted to make sure which one was which that we were paying for. On this one here, I'll have to.
Yeah, it just says Salsi Sound Incorporated Music Service Fee. 4856.
So if you don't mind, I'll check into this and get back to you.
Right. Thank you.
So are there any other items on the consent agenda for discussion?
Make a motion to approve. There's no other questions.
I'll second.
Is that Mr. Henry? Any debate? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I, too, vote aye. Motion carries. First thing on our active agenda tonight is our business license ordinance amendment, considering it's authorizing an ordinance amending Chapter 5.52 Sunnyside Municipal Code to include amendments required under Chapter 35.9 RCW of Washington, the revised Code of Washington for Business Licensing, providing for severability.
Severability.
And establishing an effective dates for the amendments and the ordinance. Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, council, with your permission, I'd like to turn the floor to Mr. Jamie Healy.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. City Manager. This is somewhat of a housekeeping item. We have an existing ordinance for business licensing. The state has kind of taken over that process and procedure for people obtaining endorsements under their, that is now their city license, on their state license. And within that process, there are some requirements as far as specific definitions for engaging in business rather than just calling it business. So there's some state-directed language incorporated into our existing business license ordinance. And then there's also some new requirements as far as the state did a study, what should be exempt, what, who should pay, who shouldn't pay, as far as, they came up with businesses that operate from outside of town but make less than $2,000 a year by conducting business should be exempt and not have to get some of these endorsements. So it's somewhat of a cleanup and getting in compliance with what the state requires in order to them be handling the business licensing service for the city. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
If I recall, somewhere along the line, there was some sort of deadline on this, too, wasn't there?
There is. It's kind of our, typically our last meeting to get it on, to get it adopted before October 1. So we did have some deadlines to meet. It did go to our attorney's office for some vetting. And we do have an approved product to present to council for adoption. And then we'd be sending this on to the state to let them know that we have adopted the new language that fits the RCW.
Any other questions?
Just maybe this is not, well, it's related to business license, but the question is, I know when we went to the annual, the AWC meeting last year, they talked about doing this online licensing. And they kind of, they made it sound like there's going to be a lot more businesses that could be caught under this program that would be increased fees for the city because some people were doing business without getting a local license. Have we noticed an increase in that at all?
We have. I can turn it, Elizabeth could probably answer that better than myself, but I have to, I have a login with the state and they send them for approval for the city to click on each time somebody applies for a city endorsement. It goes across my computer, they're sent to me, too, to verify that they've met their inspections and things. And then we click approve on that for them to be able to issue the license. And we've seen a pretty good uptick. And it has to do with, because they're reporting all their quarterlies and everything to one agency. So they're picking up on that thing. They, it's a check and balance and they verify, oh, you reported sales in this city, but you don't have an endorsement. You have to get an endorsement now that you've reported those. So we have seen an increase.
And that was kind of what they said, that there was going to be a way for us to be able to catch more of that lost revenue in a sense because they're doing business without a license. So it sounds like it is working for, in the benefit of the city, I guess, for recouping some of those lost.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And any other questions? Any other debate?
Madam Mayor, I would move to amend Chapter 5.52 Sunnyside Municipal Code to include amendments required under Chapter 3590 RCW for business licensing, providing for severability and establishing an effective date, dates for the amendment and the ordinance.
I'll second.
Mr. Hicks seconds. Mr. Restucci, motion. Any other, any other debate? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I, too, vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I've been, just as a note, I'd been reading a lot about. I've been, just as a note, I'd been reading a lot about, don't forget to get this done before the deadline, you know, seems kind of a good thing to take that off the, off our, off our plate. Alright, so next on our agenda this evening is a right-of-way procedures. Consider approval of right-of-way procedures as presented per Washington State Department of Transportation and Federal Highway Administration for funding of the East Edison Half Street Improvement Project. Is this what I think it is?
I hope so, yes ma'am, it is.
Mr. City Manager, please.
Madam Mayor, council, with your permission, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Fisher on this one, and yes, I believe this is correct, you are correct, this is what we're trying to get done.
Thank you, Mr. Day, Mayor, members of council. Basically with this, this is an update to our right-of-way procedures. We haven't, I don't think, these have been reviewed, I think, since '08, which is actually the last time we acquired right-of-way for a project. Now, the East Edison Half Street Project, which is there, you know, from Barnard to YVH, there is some parcels in there, some right-of-way private property to acquire to build the project. So the county is our right-of-way agent and since, I think we're five or six city managers in, since the last time they're reviewed, we had to update that information. So Mr. Day, obviously because he is assigned an authority for the city, had to be included in here, he had to send a resume or his qualifications into the county, they take a look at that and then basically this is an update, so everybody understands what the requirements are per the RCWs and WACS. And so what this is tonight is basically that update and we get this approved, goes on to the county and federal highways and the state and we're, we're back in business. So with that, I can take any questions.
Alright, councilman? You probably remember that this is a stretch of high sidewalk that we're looking at over on East Edison that's kind of this way of Golem's Landing.
Correct.
In front of the apartments there.
Yes.
So this will help us get through our rest of our funding for that?
Yeah, the funding, yeah, that's all in place, we're just waiting for design. This year was a very busy year, so we didn't, we didn't decide to, we've got a lot going on as, as we all know. So we had four years to spend the grant and we're just through the first year now. But there were some issues with, you know, right-of-way acquisition is very, it doesn't matter if the, it's, it's six square feet, it takes a long time to go through that process. So this is part of that and they did notice that we needed to update these as part of that process, but we shouldn't have any problem at all being ready to go as far as acquiring that right-of-way by my next June. Once school is out, that's the idea, is to build it once the bus traffic slows down, because it's, it gets pretty crazy out there during school hours. So, so that's, that's the plan.
Okay.
Will that complete the section of sidewalk that is gonna connect the, it's not YV tech, it's a?
Yeah, there's YV tech in.
It's YV tech?
Well, there's already sidewalk there, but there's just the ag health.
The section in there.
Sidewalk there, it's just right in front of the apartments and then down to, all the way basically to YVH.
And that will complete the sidewalk all the way down there, okay.
Yep.
That's exciting. Any other thoughts from council? So what is the desire of the council regarding this issue?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Henry, motion to approve, second by Mr. Guerrero. Is there any further debate? Just to say that it's a long time coming and we're very excited. So if there's no debate, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I two vote aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Swan Ridge Preliminary Platte, consider the approval of a resolution to approve the Swan Ridge Preliminary Platte of subdivision. Mr. City Manager, you would?
Madam Mayor, council, if I can turn the floor over to Jamie Ailing, this is gonna be like a, I don't know, tag team here tonight, it looks like.
Thank you, Mr. Day, Mayor, members of council. What you do have before you is a resolution to approve the preliminary platte of Swan Ridge. This is a development up off of Swan Road. It'd be north of the Sunset Heights Development, which is right at the top of Grandview Avenue. There's proposed, there's roughly eight and a half, nine acres in there that's owned by Dr. Martin and he's looking to develop that into thirty-seven lots in two phases. There'd be a couple of cul-de-sacs put in, there'd be city streets and there will be, in order not to affect the neighbors to the north, or to the south, sorry, I always say north because it's uphill, but to the south, they're looking at doing some cutting and fill, so they drop the elevation of that down, so not to impose on views and things of that nature. Been pretty well thought out and developed. There will unfortunately have to be a lift station put in in this, just because of the lay of the land, but that's been kind of processed through, water will be served, it'll come off of Swan Road and on all that, the planning commission met on this, submitted an environmental checklist and did the environmental review, we issued a mitigated determination of insignificance, so they'll get curb gutter sidewalk along Swan Road and within the development itself. Planning Commission held a public hearing on the item on August fourteenth and then voted five to zero to recommend approval to the city council. So it comes before you, if it gets approval tonight, then they can work towards submitting the engineering for the utilities, the water and sewer and the streets and then the grading and start developing lots, they'll get it put in and then it'll come back to you once they get those improvements done for final platte approval before they can actually assign the parcel numbers and divide up the lots and sell it. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
Yes, Mr. Rustucci.
Was there any opposition to this at the public hearing?
There was not, actually, and I don't know if it has to do with the fact that they did talk to the neighbors, they are working with them to lower that so views aren't imposed. There are three lots up in that other division that actually have view easements that protect that, it can't be affected. So I think the legwork and ahead of it probably prevented any of the opposition and they see it, they're the large lots, they're gonna be the same character of what you see there now, so there, there wasn't at the commission meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Barzma.
So as I understand it, you just, from what you just said, the houses are gonna be almost the same as the houses that are just to the south there, up above?
Probably a different builder, but there is some in the lower part, they're looking at a different concept of some common wall units, they'd be separate, separate houses that can be bought and sold, but they could share a line, a property line for.
Like a townhouse?
Uh, it's not, you could, they call them common wall units, but you can only get, you can't have a row of them like townhouses, so it'd be, they'd meet the requirements of the single-family size requirements and things of that nature, they just share a wall. It's looking at maybe accommodating some of the elderly public that maybe doesn't want as much to maintain or take care of, doesn't know how well it'll go over if they put in a few and it doesn't go, they'll merge the two together and just create one big lot out of it and they'll carry it on, but they thought with the way that it's set down and not really a view down in the bottom part of that, that that might work better. So we did check through and verify and it complies with the lot criteria in the R1, so with the fifty-foot minimum frontage, things of that nature, so.
Thank you, sir.
Just curious, do we know what are the, the single-family residents, do we know what kind of, where the, you know, what the cost may be yet, or do we have any idea on, you know, upscale housing as opposed to low-income housing? Just looking at the neighborhood, I think a little more upscale.
The plan with, and the representatives here, too, and I know it's not a hearing per se, but the proposal is looking to continue on with what you see, the $300,000 level, somewhere in that ballpark.
So in keeping with what's already.
Yes.
There. Okay.
So Jamie, is there, I mean, obviously it got to this stage already, but you said they're gonna come back after the, the, versus the study's been done, so is there enough capacity to sustain those number of houses in the area as far as sewer and water?
Yes, we do.
Plenty of pipes?
They'll size, they'll, the developer will, will front the cost of the, like the lift station and such, they'll be responsible for it, they'll install it all and then they'll turn that over to the city and that's part of the signing of the final platte. So we'll spec it out and tell them this is what it's gonna require, they'll pay for it, put it all in, make sure it's functioning and then by signing that off, then we accept it at that point.
Okay, thank you.
So what is the council's, oh, excuse me, Mr. Strumler?
Is it gonna have any impact on the intersection of Maple Grove there, do you know, or is it gonna, are we gonna have to be doing any work there? I don't know what.
With thirty-seven lots, you're probably not gonna get enough average daily trips from a residential, because they will disperse. We do know some of them will go down the hill to Maple Grove, some of them will just turn right and buzz down Grandview Avenue, some will go to Columbia. There's different, there's a lot of different points to get back into town or heading to Yakima, you can jump over down West Riverside and out to Granger through Gap Road, there's several exit points there to go, so we don't believe there'll be any impact traffic-wise and a big enough development to require any type of traffic impact analysis.
It's not, not as big as the other two.
No.
Okay, council, what is your desire on this one?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is that coming down there from Mr. Rustucci, seconds? Any, any debate on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same size. I two vote aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright. So. Okay, next on the agenda is the BBD Development Manufactured Home Park. Consider the approval of a resolution to approve the D, BBD Manufactured Home Park Development Plan, Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, if I may turn the floor over to Mr. Ailing.
Thank you, Mr. Day, Mayor, members of council. This resolution is of a similar nature, however, it's not a subdivision, it is a development plan, which is required through the process of developing a manufactured home park. This particular application has been through a, quite a journey and history of getting to this point. We received the original application clear back over a year ago for, it started with a rezone application, applicant bought the property, rezoned it from industrial to commercial and then went, by going to commercial, had the opportunity to apply for a conditional use permit to be allowed to develop a manufactured home park. That conditional use permit was submitted and heard by the city's hearing examiner. He had a public hearing on it, there was lots of discussion at that public hearing and it ultimately ended in a decision by the hearing examiner to approve a mobile home park, a manufactured home park on this particular property. It's on East Edison, on the south side, kind of across from Golem Landing, it's a, an asparagus field currently. And so they got approval for that and then came back before the planning commission to go through the process of start and once they got approval to do the manufactured home park, went through the process to go to the planning commission, had another public hearing for the development plan, the layout of it. It's ninety-two spaces with a community strip towards the entrance of the park, there's one, two egress, ingress egresses, they do not have, it goes all the way down to future Johnson Avenue, which is down by where Popeye's Chicken is currently building, by Carl's Jr. right in there, but they do not have access onto that. So on the map, you'd see that they proposed a U-shaped park with a center connector road in case there's a blockage on one side or the other, they can still get in and out via the two required egresses like the code requires. This layout does meet our criteria in chapter title seventeen, dealing with what is required for manufactured home parks. Developer is going to have, it's a little bit different, they're going to own all of the units in there and they're gonna have some covenants that they believe they're going to be like no more than five-year-old units. It's their proposal, they've done several parks in tri-cities and other areas and had brought photos and of other parks that they've done and looked to do a fairly, a good job with these parks. After the planning commission's public hearing, there was no opposition at that, that hearing and the commission recommended five zero to recommend approval to the council of the development plan. Similar to the preliminary plattes, they will go through and then submit the engineering for the water and sewer lines, each one of these will have individual water meters, there won't be one main meter for the park, we changed that code and, and there is sewer capacity for it. There will be some impacts traffic-wise with ninety-two versus thirty-seven. They have the option of pulling out and going left and heading into Yakima Valley Highway to a light or going west or east out to two forty-one. It's probably easier to make that with a car than a bus, but that's the only two directions to go out of this park, because they don't have permission or access to go down onto Johnson Avenue or Yakima Valley Highway. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Has there been any study on what kind of traffic we expect out of there, especially at highway two forty-one?
There will be, I mean, there, there has not been a traffic impact analysis conducted by a professional agency to do that. Ninety-two units, you're probably gonna look at probably about four to, four to five hundred average daily trips with a development.
That, that's the same route used with school bus, the school bus garage is up there, too, isn't it?
It is.
It's not gonna be a lot of traffic on that road, especially with buses and YVH and the intersection right there where the malls at, it's gonna be chaotic, I think.
And that intersection at two forty-one, in a pickup, it's not too bad, but if you're in a car seeing traffic coming down two forty-one, it's kind of difficult, because that guardrail blocks traffic. I can see we're gonna have to put a stoplight in there at some point and would that be a state expense, would that be a city expense, or the developer's expense? Whose, whose expense would that be?
Typically, once those come down, I could, I could verify that with Mr. Fisher, but usually those costs get pushed down, the state doesn't typically do too much on their, just out of the generosity of their heart, they typically pass those costs down.
Because we're looking at what, probably half a million to put in, change that intersection over to stoplights?
A stoplight? You're looking at a million or more, probably.
Yeah, you're looking probably, probably a half a million just for the light itself, but then all the, you know, the different lanes, turn lanes, if you have to put in there, you get the, you'd have to replace the bridge, that all to be ripped out. That intersection right now currently is, is not good. We've had a lot of fatalities there, like a couple, anyway, but have a lot of, a lot of accidents. The state is aware that that's an issue even without doing anything, I mean, there's, so there may be, you know, in the future, if we do see issues with that, it definitely, we would sit down with WashDOT and when they see that it's a problem, intersection as far as the site triangle and, and people having to pull out there because of that guardrail and the ditch and it really is a pretty dynamic, there's a lot going on there. I think that it would probably go beyond the scope of these guys that are trying to build this, this trailer park. It obviously wouldn't be right to, to put all that onus on them, is I guess the way we would look at it, but we can definitely have a discussion with them, we can talk to WashDOT and at least get some preliminary ideas of what they think needs to be done there and then kind of try to put together an idea of what that might cost and, and definitely look at it. I mean, it's definitely a concern, but, but I think the, I think really your options are pretty limited with that intersection, there's not a lot you can do with it.
I guess my, my problem would be is we know it's gonna create a lot of traffic. I guess my, my problem would be is we know it's going to create a lot of traffic at that intersection. We know it's already a bad intersection. If we get one or two fatalities over the period of a year, year and a half, the city could be looking at some trouble too. I mean, it, I feel it's an issue we need to address along with it. That's my opinion.
Any other thoughts? Yes, Mr. Boersma?
Yeah, when this first came up, I, I'm sure I'm not the only one, got a lot of phone calls from individuals who were opposed to this entire process. And I kind of, at the time, was quite conflicted and I can't say that I'm less conflicted at this point, but I went out on my own initiative and just had some fun with it and talked to the folks over at Valley Manufactured Housing here in Sunnyside. And I wanted to get an idea of what the houses were like and how they're built and what standards they're built to because typically we've believed over the years that manufactured housing tends to fall apart within a short period of time. One of my first jobs ever was in helping to set up these homes, many of the older homes that are around Sunnyside I worked on. And there's a couple of them I'm amazed that are still standing. So I went and asked and they went above and beyond what I asked for. And in my Mitt Romney moment here, I have binders of these houses explaining the build quotes or the build statistics or what they're requiring on all of this. And obviously, they're not one of the plethora of manufactured housing built by, or owned by Warren Buffett. They claim that they build the higher standards, but I'm impressed by the standards that they use to build these houses. And I would encourage, if this does pass and goes forward, that they would really make an effort to purchase homes made here in Sunnyside. And that way, we could house people in Sunnyside and also employ people in Sunnyside. There would be a benefit to that. However, I am also extremely concerned about traffic. Highway two forty-one intersection is just not asking for more traffic. If it's going to be done properly, the bridge does have to be removed, lanes have got to be added. I don't want to see a huge loss of life at these intersections. And that's probably where I'm leaning at this point is until that intersect, intersection question is resolved, I'm really reluctant to put ninety-two homes in there.
If I may, I am super happy to see the growth as well. I'm excited to see regardless of the traffic. I think we're going to need homes for the Ostroms right down just the way there. And I think this is a small step forward in getting houses built and we really need housing in this area. So I'm completely for it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
Do we have a guesstimation on the road that's between Hardee's and Popeyes that's coming in? Or not Hardee's, but Carl's Jr.?
I'm sorry, what?
Johnson Avenue?
Yeah, on the backside.
And what was your question?
Do we have a guesstimation on when that's going to be run through?
Well, it's got to be developed. We've got to, as people, we, we don't really have the money to, to go ahead and finish. That's probably about a three and a half, four million dollar project. So as businesses continue to come in, and they will, they'll cluster. And you get Popeyes coming there, people will want to, as that happens, then yeah, we'll, we'll keep moving that direction. But, but there really is no plans on the books now for, for completing that all the way over to, over by Silver Creek.
I was going to say, kind of lower the traffic impact.
Right, but I don't think there's any provision in, in this, in that plat that, that shows them be able to come out the south side of their, of their subdivision there to come out to Johnson. I, I think it's the way the lots are set up. I don't, I don't think that's even a possibility, based from what I, my first-
And that's a, currently a proposed street. It's current, it's, it's private property. We don't, it's not a right of way either. It's, Mr. Johnson owns that whole parcel and the leg that comes out there. We obtained right of way as part of the plat when they divided off the lot for Popeyes. We required, and short, it's a way of getting, obtaining it without having to go through the right of way acquisition process through the plat. We can require that. So we required acquisition of that, dedication of that right of way on the plat so they could develop that first section of it. And then as it develops further, we'll continue to get more.
Is there a, a plan to do this in a phase like the one that's up on, up on the hill? Is this a phased-in piece?
It's not necessarily phased in. Obviously, they probably don't have ninety-two of them ready to roll in and, and put in right now. I do know that at the hearing, and as part of the record, that the developer has been down and talked with Valley Manufactured Housing, trying to put together, they would love to work with them to get the homes built and put in straight from, so they stay, it's a short haul down the road. They haven't worked out the final details on that, but they do, they have approached Valley about utilizing them to build the homes for them.
Well, my question on that regard is whether or not, if it's being done in kind of stages, you know, as you build the house, you put the house in, whether or not the traffic then will, you know, kind of build at some, some rate that it's not too much to handle all at once. Does that makes, does that make some sort of sense there? Because obviously, you've got ninety, ninety-
It will be incremental, but once you get to that ninety-two, we're still with the same two roads.
Right, but perhaps-
We also have the Ports Commercial Industrial Park that's, for the majority vacant, that's already approved for more spaces out there for different buildings, complexes, doctors' offices, things of that nature.
That Edison Road definitely needs to be thrown into the six-year plan somewhere, I would say. Mr. Fisher?
And on that note, Ted, what Jamie was saying, you know, part of that Golem Landing project there also, there's a road that goes north. It's got type, two barricades up on it now.
Right.
Now, the phase two, three, I'm not sure how the ports got that phased out, but it is supposed to connect over to Scheller Road. So that will definitely, you know, relieve some of that congestion. Because people could, you know, you could take a left on Van Nutley or whatever that is right there off Edison. They'd be able to, to get up to Scheller Road if you needed to. And you'd use the other intersection there at Scheller and two forty-one or you go left and go back towards town, go west. So that definitely would, would be a little bit of relief, but I'm not sure where they're at on, on, on that phase. So we'll definitely have our engineers take a look at it. We'll have HLA, I'll get with them tomorrow and we'll, we'll take a look at Edison and have them kind of weigh in on, on this and to make sure we're not holding these guys up, but to make sure we're doing our due diligence to, to cover our bases.
Mr., Mr. Grau?
So I'm glad to see there's a rec area. So that's going to be more like a park more likely, or is it going to be more of a green space for kids probably to play?
At this point, there will be a green space to play. Eventually, they may get a little clubhouse to put in there. They are going to have an onsite manager. So there will be, one of these spaces will be dedicated to a full-time onsite live-in manager for the park.
So currently, do we have any requirements for green space for developments like this as far as kid play area versus having to go Central Park, you know, quite a few blocks away?
There are in the, in the manufactured home parks, not in our subdivision code, but we are kind of changing that because we're realizing that there's a reason that we get these developments and then all of a sudden, we have thirty-four basketball hoops out on the sidewalks in the street because they have nowhere else to go. So we're revamping that to make those more of a requirement that'll help relieve that pressure of, like said, the, the kids in the street and basketball hoops and everything else.
So the rec area, is that going to be something that they're going to maintain?
It will, none of this would be city.
City, so the streets and-
And the street inside would be private, would not be a city street to maintain.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the same way as Mr. Councilman Boersma. It's, it seems like there's going to be quite a few vehicles because obviously each one of these houses will have at least two vehicles, you know, you know, most individuals have at least two vehicles at home. So taking ninety-two spaces, we're looking at technically almost two hundred vehicles. So it's going to be a lot of traffic, a lot of vehicles going either east or west on that road. And I'm venturing mostly going to try to connect with Yakima Valley Highway to get to either freeway or something else. But it's, yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about amount of traffic and plus kids walking from the high school to YV Tech and it's luckily we don't have the sidewalks already done. But still, it seems like it's going to be something to keep an eye on for sure.
Yeah, I think we have to plan our traffic out a little bit before we throw hundreds of cars in there.
Okay. Mr. Boersma, I saw you as well.
Yes, so I, I was reminded recently of a, a mobile home park that was put in Sunnyside on the south side of town a few years ago, probably twenty years ago. And at the time that it was installed, it was supposed to be an example of how a mobile home park is supposed to run, how it's supposed to look. And currently, it is somewhat of a disaster. So what mechanisms do we have in place to maintain this up to code, up to where the developer is claiming that it's going to be? Because if we add in almost a hundred houses, I mean, code enforcement could just be overwhelmed if, if things start getting away. I mean, we don't have a great record with mobile home parks in Sunnyside. So I'd just like to make sure that we can keep this under control.
The only thing- Sorry, didn't push my button. They do have a, a homeowners association and guide. Those sometimes are as good as the paper they're written on. They're tough to enforce. We do have our code requirements, which they currently meet, but yeah, you're right. They do, they do have a toll on, on code enforcement typically. The last park that we have approved through the council, the commission and the council has actually done a fair job of cleaning up an existing park. It's kind of across the street here from this facility and added an additional space. We actually haven't had any code enforcement involvement on that one yet. However, it's only a couple, two, three years old at this point. So it does have a lot to do with your ownership and management of it. He's just given us his examples and provision of other parks that they have already developed and are under development and that they, that the business that they do, like you said, there, that, that's kind of a gam, a gamble, I would say. We don't have-
Well, and I remember when he was here before, you know, he said this is something he'd like to hang on to for twenty years. I mean, he's got kids. He wants to, you know, be able to pay for them to go to college. But after twenty years, I mean, as a body, we've got to think long-term. And so what's this going, what's going to happen? Is there any provision to maintain that and keep that, you know, new owners? You know, are they going to, how, how do we have any teeth to, to keep that under control?
Currently, it's, there's none. I mean, it's just what's, the existing park, we don't have any requirements that they, the only requirements now are that you can't bring in something that's pre-seventy-six. He's actually writing into his that it'd be like five-year-old and newer. But like I said, our council could add that condition on to them. They don't have to prove them as is. They can add things of that nature.
That's definitely something that we need to talk about as we go through this project because this probably won't be the last such development that comes before us. And as Mr. Henry mentioned, we do have a need of housing. And this is going to be something that's brought before us on, on regular occasions. And we need to come up with something to ensure that they, they stay well-maintained and clean and, you know, look, look good in Sunnyside. I know it can be done. I've seen it. There's several examples in both Tri-Cities and Yakima that I see regularly. And it can be done. And I think it's on us to make it happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So what would we like to do with this particular development resolution?
I would like to move to approve the resolution.
Henry, is there a second? Okay. So Mr. Henry, motion by Henry, second by Hicks. Any further debate?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Ristucci.
Mr. Ailing, the planning commission held a public hearing. The vote was five oh, correct? The commissioners are recommending that we approve this?
That is correct.
I believe you said five two?
Five to zero. They only had five members present.
Okay. I'm sorry, I heard, I heard two. So their recommendation to us to approve is, as Mr. Ristucci asked, is that correct?
That is correct.
I have to believe that our planning commissioners, Madam Mayor, reviewed that and looked at the traffic issues as well. And I am concerned about the fact that we are going to need housing. We need affordable housing. I mean, every city in the valley needs affordable housing. But with Ostroms coming in, I think that's something we need to be mindful of. So I, I can support this motion.
Okay. Any other debate?
Yeah, it, it isn't so much that I'm against it. I think we have to start looking at the traffic. We can't wait till we have two or three deaths. Now, oh man, we've got to do something. We can, we need to start making plans for that as well. I mean, it, it's nothing to do with this itself, but it, it doesn't put a burden on the city and we need to start addressing it.
Okay. So another?
I was basically kind of voiced the same concern on Mr. Strumler. It's, obviously, traffic is going to be an issue of those intersections. And yeah, I'm, I'm just not comfortable without having to address that without basically addressing the traffic issue, moving forward with it. So I can't support it.
Okay. Any further debate? Is there, is there any way to, just as a question, any way to put on there? I know we're talking, that we're already looking towards the idea of getting some traffic resolutions in some of this area, if I understood correctly. That we'll be looking at that traffic issue moving forward.
I have possibly a recommendation that may help with easing some of this and making more comfortable with an approval. Would have to be reworded and worked into the resolution. But we look at, and we could bring it back to the next meeting, a, coming up with a proportionate share, figure out what those intersection improvements would be and disperse it amongst what's left for developing out there and then come up with a proportionate share that they would have to pay towards those improvements. They wouldn't be made right now with this one going in because we'd have to collect from all of them as it goes. But they, we would have this put into a pool or a fund to be able to use and leverage those funds to make those improvements. So that-
Are you talking in kind of like an impact fee of some sort?
Not necessarily in an impact fee, but it, it is. But it's, it's, they call it a, it, I wish I would have done these in reverse order because I have that coming up on the next one. But, but yes, that's, in, in essence, yes, it's an, a traffic impact fee that we would collect by you developing. You're going to cause this much impact to that area. So you're responsible for this much of it.
Okay. Is there any other, any other debate down, just before we take the vote? Yeah, Mr. Strumler?
Is it, would the state participate in, in that expense at all or?
It depends upon which intersection. If we're dealing with the state intersection, their involvement tends to be, they do some of the legwork to calculate up what it would cost to make those improvements and then help us with coming up with how we proportion that out. So that's usually their involvement. They, they will, if it, if it comes down to a state project right of way, they'll pay for it, but then they spread those costs out and shuffle and say, okay, city, we did this for a million and you're responsible for getting us seven hundred and fifty thousand. We don't care where you get it from, but you need to get us that.
I guess my problem is what you were, with what you were saying just a little bit ago about other developers sharing in the cost. That's talking about it taking several years, maybe five, six years before we even start considering a traffic signal.
Could be.
And I think, I don't know when this would be pretty well maxed out. Say, a year from now. That's a lot of traffic for a lot of years without any improvements made.
Well, that's, that's why they look at proportionate share. So figure out if that's a greater proportion, you're going to get a greater amount up front and may be able to put those in. But yes.
What I would, what I would like to see the city do is initially is start making plans on that bridge where we can make a left, left-hand turn, a right-hand turn and a straight-ahead turn so that all the traffic doesn't back up behind somebody that wants to go in matter what direction.
Okay. Well, Mr. Strumler, at this point, we'd kind of need to make a decision on whether or not we're going to develop, approve this particular plan before we can move on to, I think that, I think we're under, you know, all in a favor of something to do with the transportation situation. So is it, I think, are we clear on that one?
Yep.
Yeah? Okay. Well, if those in favor of the, the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm not sure who all said aye. Could I see a raise of hands? One, two, three, four. Those, those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
So two, four. And I'm mixed on it, but I'm going to vote yes. So five, five two on this. And so the motion carries.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to comment, I am with you on the mixed feeling. I, we need housing, but I'd sure like to get some of these questions answered as, as far as transportation, but also as far as we're going to maintain this as a, as a, an attractive place as opposed to an eyesore.
Right. So some, some, moving ahead and maybe you could be addressing that with this next one regarding the one for the New Life Homes, Catholic Charities Housing New Life Homes preliminary plat. Consider the approval of a resolution to approve the Catholic Charities Housing New Life Homes preliminary plat. Life Homes Preliminary Platte.
Madam Mayor, council, if I may turn the floor over to Mr. Ailing again.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Mayor, members of council, shifting gears back to a plat rather than a manufactured home development plan. This is a preliminary plat approval for a long plat of 60 lots on almost 11 acres, 10.4 or 10.84 acres. It's on the north side of Allen Road, west of the outpost. There's a manufactured home park, mobile home park there in a triangle. And then this is the property that goes, kind of engulfs around it and goes back and borders by Sulfur Creek Waste Way on the west side, the canal there, and then Walmart's behind it. So this is 60 lots. It's the Catholic Charities, same program that they're doing with their single-family housing program down by Bymart where they've developed those lots. It's an R3 zone, high-density residential, but this is being laid out and developed to R1 standards. So you'll have your, your R1-sized lots. It is their single, single-family homeownership, so there'll all be single-family dwellings in there. They did incorporate a city park dedicated as part of the right-of-way on the pinnacle of the first, where the two, first two roads come together. It's about 8,000 square feet. They're gonna put underground sprinklers and either saw it or seed it before it's turned over to us. There will be a fence along the, let's get my bearings here, along Lot 57 and 50, I can't read, 56, the bigger lot up there. And then there will also be a fence along the, on this map, the southern boundary to protect anything from going into the drain, the Sulfur Creek Waste Way there. There's already, it's not the best fence. They figured most of the homeowners will put their own fences up on the northern boundary of the property. It will be fenced from the mobile home park as well. So this one did take a look at traffic impacts. We got the state involved through the SEPA process, Environmental Review. They came back to us and said their numbers don't look quite right. We're gonna run our numbers on it. They ran their numbers, came back, requiring some improvements for a turn lane. And because the fact that the hospital project has maxed out all the capacity out in that area, any new developments after that are gonna bear a proportionate share of cost. So they've come up with saying the channelization of the road out there is gonna cost approximately $155,000 to do that improvement. And with your, they take it on a, they take the average daily trips into account, but then they also take the peak traffic at the peak time. They say those trips during that peak time that are gonna affect that are worth about your proportion. Towards this improvement is $1,873.41. So this will go into a fund to make those improvements. With that improvement, they feel that it'll still operate at a level service acceptable, a level Service C, which is what is, what it currently functions at and is acceptable and what our goal is of the comp plan. So we did address traffic coming out of this one. We have looked at water and sewer. There is some revamping of the lift station for this project. And it seems to be a good project. Most, their other projects have been kind of a flagship for that level of housing. They keep a clean project and it stays long-lasting. They've got the Beckner-McLean project that's several years old that still looks good as the day it went in. Their multifamily projects are well-kept also, but this one's their single-family project. Their, their owners go through a sweat equity. They have to put in so much work into building their own house as well to get their hours that are required. So there's a sense of pride instilled in that as well, which helps. So this is 60 lots, well-needed housing in that pricing level as well. And staff, the planning commission did hold a public hearing the same night on this one. Had the same recommendation of five to zero and approval. And we did get through the environmental review on this as well. So staff would recommend approval, and I can stand for any questions.
Council, councilman.
So as I understand this, we have before us tonight three developments. One on Swan Road, one on Edison, and one on Allen Road. And so there's, if we calculate, as somebody's mentioned, two cars per lot, there's about 37 on the one on Swan Road. So we're looking at 80 cars per day on Swan Road, plus probably close to 180, maybe more on Edison Road, plus now it looks like 120-ish on Allen Road. We are really, if this goes through and these developments happen, we're really gonna have to do some serious thinking about our streets, transportation infrastructure.
Right.
And we see that load of traffic hitting our streets. And with Ostrom's coming in and that number of people coming in to go to work over there and perhaps other places coming in, we've got some serious thinking to do about that. That just popped into my mind as I was listening to this.
Well, it certainly sounds like we have quite, quite a bit of six, six-year street planning opportunities before us, so... Yep, there you go. Those initials, those initials always mess me up, but there you go. Any, any other questions for Mr. Ailing, Mr. Stromler?
You said there was a, the state had done a study. Did they give an estimate of cars?
They did. They figure 564 trips per day.
And that's for roughly 60 homes. And the one on Edison is over 90.
You do get to use a different factor, whether it's a mobile home park or a single-family dwelling or an apartment complex. So you can't use the same number for each of those developments. According to the, what do they say they used here? They, they have a trip generation manual, the ITE that they use. And there's different categories of what type of housing it is. So those numbers will be slightly different. They figure people will have more, more cars, more family members typically driving, living in a single-family dwelling than they do in the manufactured home parks.
I don't, it doesn't sound like it'd be unreasonable to think the same number of cars for 92 mobile homes versus 60. So that's 400, that could be as much as 700 on Edison.
Additional cars.
Additional cars, yes.
I had a question.
Yes, Mr. Henry.
So this is the Catholic Charities, is this a Catholic diocese program? Do these houses pay any taxes for...
They actually do. They don't go through, this program pays full property taxes. They don't go through an exempt program. There, there are some programs that they have that can, but this particular, these ones do not. They, they pay...
Every year they'll pay property taxes. There are some down there that don't, as of right now, correct?
Not in the Bymart, not in the Bymart development. Excuse me.
In that area, down that road, there are some, or not in that area at all?
I don't believe so.
Don't believe so.
Not in that.
I think, Mr. Ailing, are the houses that are maybe non-exempt are the ones over off of 16th and Scheller? Are those?
Those, I believe, and that's the, that's a multifamily development. And that one was, I believe, went through a tax exempt process.
The taxes are the same as everyone else's? They're, okay.
Sure.
Very good.
Size of your house and so forth. Okay.
I'm glad to hear that they obviously went, what was the county? Who was the one that did the traffic impact? Was it the county or was it the state?
State.
So I'm glad, obviously, the state looked at that because even though that's an area that's not quite fully developed yet, but obviously the hospital actually goes in where they're planning to go in, that road going from, was it, is it still 241 that crosses over the highway?
Yes.
So obviously, there's gonna be a lot of traffic in that area also. So I'm glad they're doing some...
Yeah, they've, they've taken the approach that the hospital's already set to go there. So they've, they've set those numbers and anything more is putting it over. And that's where we get into the, is it fair to the developer to bear the entire cost of improving this intersection because they were the last one to the party? Everybody else got the benefit of, it was not at capacity when we built, so we didn't have to pay anything. But now I tipped it over by one, so I have to foot the whole bill. So that's where we look at this. How do we pro-rata share these developments?
Yeah, so again, I'm glad to hear that. And obviously, it sounds like they put some, some thought into the state and obviously New Life Homes, which is Catholic Charities. And obviously, the housing development that they put out around town, I would see them, you know, seem to be in nice shape and they upkeep them quite well. So I'm, I'm happy to see these developments go in. And obviously, we definitely do need more housing and there's gonna be, I think, an additional addition, a nice addition to that section of town. And also, we have good capacity as far as water availability and sewer and everything else in that area.
Water, yes. Sewer capacity is there with some additions, deepening of the, or increasing the pumps on the lift station and moving it a little bit, so, but that will be borne by the developer.
They'll take care of that additional cost too. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. What is the council's desire on this one?
Move to approve?
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Henry, seconded by Mr. Guerrero. Any further debate? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? I too vote aye. Motion carries. All right. Moving right along here. So the next item of business is the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Award. This item was added to our agenda this evening to consider accepting a assistance to firefighters' grant funds of $171,577 to purchase fire safety equipment, Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, council, that's good news, by the way.
Good news.
This is to buy the SCBA's. I apologize for the late notice on this. This came in Friday, I understand. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the chief.
Can you explain it a little bit further? CBA, what is that?
SCBA, self-contained breathing apparatus.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Madam Mayor and members of council, thank you. Yeah, so the, on August 31st, the Fire Department had applied through a FEMA grant. They received a notification on August 31st that we were awarded $171,500, or $171,577 on what was originally a $180,000 grant. We, our match was, has to be a minimum of 5%. At that time, it was estimated it was gonna be $9,000. That money was set aside in anticipation of someday, you know, being awarded this grant. Once we, once we found out, notification that, we contacted two vendors. The basis of this grant was to purchase equipment that was interoperable with the surrounding jurisdictions. Basically, the majority of Yakima County now has gone to a newer model of self-contained breathing apparatus. And there's a safety hazard with us having, we actually have two styles in our station now, requiring two different face pieces, and they're not interchangeable. And so it causes a little bit of a problem. It's actually a big safety if you try to, try to make them work with each other. So we, we had chosen that we were gonna go with the MSA brand to be interoperable. There's two vendors in our area, Ellen Curtis and C Western. We contacted both of those to receive some quotes. Interesting, one of the two vendors, what happens is MSA corporate, has a corporate pricing scheme, and they will award whichever vendor they think deserves this special pricing. C Western was, was awarded this special pricing. Ellen Curtis was not. We, we actually gave them, over the last couple days, we, last week, we paired them. We told them we had this much money to spend. What can you give us? We ended up being able to compare apples to apples. They're identical quotes in terms of type and quantity. Ellen Curtis was able to, as, to go on the FRGPO, which is a grant, or RFP procurement program that the city is a member of. They were able to piggyback us with a grant in Spokane County and actually beat out the price from, better than what the MSA corporate pricing scheme was. So as a result, we were able to actually increase the amount and types of apparatus that we originally was requested in the grant. We did contact FEMA to make sure that that was gonna be okay. As a result, the price, the final price from Ellen Curtis, which was the best of the two quotes, was $179,678.32. Our match is gonna be, I spoke to FEMA today, our match is gonna be somewhere in the ballpark of up to $8,578, which is still below what they'd actually anticipated. If we, this pricing is only good until October 5th. We do, basically, won't get these, because we're gonna have, everything is gonna be custom embossed with the Sunnyside logo on it so that it's, we can't, so we don't lose it, basically. There's a little bit of a delay in receiving it. So delivery of these won't be probably until January, possibly February. And then Ellen Curtis said we wouldn't have to sort of hand over any funds until 30 days after we take possession of them.
Excellent.
So I would recommend that we go with Ellen Curtis.
What's the life expectancy of these tanks?
So they're, they're hydro testing on the cylinder itself, it's 15 years. And then they're fiberglass wrapped. Up until, well, up until maybe like this last couple of years, there's some, they were not, you cannot redo them, 15 years, they're disposable, and you have to buy a whole new set. Now, there's some programs out there. The government, the federal government is going through a process to sort of refurb those cylinders. Fire Department hasn't really bought onto that just yet. So right now, it's a 15-year lifespan, life expectancy.
Sounds like a great deal to me, so...
Sounds me too.
Madam Mayor, move to accept the AFG funds of $171,577 to purchase fire safety equipment.
Second.
Wow. Jump right in there, guys. All right. Any debate?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes.
I'd like to ask you to amend your motion to authorize the purchase as well. I just want to clarify the way it's written.
To purchase.
Okay.
And to purchase.
And to purchase, okay. Madam Mayor, I move to accept the AFG funds of $171,577 and purchase fire, to purchase fire safety equipment and to make that purchase happen.
Right.
I will second that also.
All right. So it's been, the motion's been made and seconded to accept the funds and to purchase the safety equipment. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oh, yes.
All right, thank you.
Motion carries. It didn't sound like there was gonna be much of debate, so I hope you don't mind I skipped that part. All right. We have next before us a, what is it here? The Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Program, also an item that was added to our agenda this evening. It's, "Consider Approving City Manager to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with AP Trident LLC to Determine and Certify the Cost of Ambulance Transport Services for City of Sunnyside as Defined pursuant to the GEMT Program." Mr. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, if I may turn this over to Chief Anderson to explain this further. This is a good opportunity for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I, I think at the last meeting or maybe at the workshop, I brought up that I mentioned that I was looking into this. There was, there's a program that in 2015, 2016, the state legislature approved a program to assist publicly-operated ground ambulance transport organizations to recoup some of their losses that they receive, that they incur as a result of transporting Medicaid recipients. And this is actually a federal program. It's gonna be, the funds come from the federal, federal government, and then they're just sent out by the state, and the program is managed by the state. It's called the Ground Emergency Medical Transport Program, and like I said, it's only available to public entities. The, what I ran into, I kind of learned about this a little bit late in the game, right after I got here. The application deadline for fiscal years that ended in 2016 and 2017 and 2018, they're on a federal fiscal year, so they go to June 30th each year. The deadline was back in March. I, I found out about this program. I'd been communicating with the state, trying to find out if we could participate. We are a Medicaid vendor for our ambulance transports, and we can build directly to Medicaid. They denied, I actually wrote back, I... They denied, I actually wrote back, I gave them kind of a explanation that I wasn't here, the department was under a different leadership, that was an acting officer at that time and may not have been aware. Could I please be reconsidered? On, basically, last week, Thursday, I think it was Thursday, they, they actually came back and said that the time had lapsed, that they were not going to be able to allow us to participate for fiscal year ending in 2016 or 2017, however, that they would allow us to go one year retroactive and then let us move forward. So we did, we did capture one of those lost years, and will be participating in the program moving forward. The program is a match program that basically, I reached out to a couple different, a couple different consulting companies. The program, the mathematical computation is extremely complicated. I, I'm pretty good about jumping into things like that, and it's intimidating to me. So, I, and the more I look at this thing, the more I think it's going to have to be a consultant, because it has to get it right the first time. It's the same program I mentioned that the City of Pasco had attempted, they thought they were going to recover 1 point something million dollars. Their mathematical calculation the first year was wrong, and they lost out on all of it. So, the other factor is, is that this program is 100% audited annually, and it requires that, uh, sort of somebody certifies it, which I feel a little safer that the number's going to be accurate and defendable if, if, if we get an outside agency to go ahead and do the calculation for us. AP Trident, I talked to two, there's two in the state that actually do this. AP Trident was the second that I talked to. The first was a company called PCG based in Boston, Massachusetts. They, they already do some Medicaid consulting, but they're not specific to the GEMT, however, they said they were aware of it. And they've done a couple for, I think, 50 agencies or something like that in the state. Their estimates was that we would recover on an annual basis somewhere around $277,000 by participation in this program. They, they also said that they would, but they would, wanted to charge us $30,000 per year to work with us, in addition to that, and then 15% on top of whatever we recover, or as alternative, I believe. AP Trident was, is another consulting company that I spoke to. They actually were influential in drafting the legislation. They were partnered with the Washington State Fire Chiefs Association. They were instrumental through the whole process, and in fact, the calculation, the paperwork, and it was actually developed by them. They are pretty confident within a high degree of certainty that they will not make any mistakes. They are willing to guarantee that they'll defend it and against any audits. Their pricing scheme is, they offered us, based off of estimated call volume, that they would request that we give them $13,500 upfront to start the process, and then at the, once they certify and we submit, then they would, whatever amount that they submit to the state, they would then get 3% of that amount, whatever the total expense is. Moving forward, after this, then moving forward, we would, uh, there's a, they, the state tags all of our medical assistance transport patients, they mark them somehow in the system, and then there's another line item that would be billed moving forward, so that that would be, actually start coming in on a rolling basis instead of an annual kind of reimbursement. That's my understanding. Other than that, after speaking to all of them, I think they're, they're pretty similar. I feel more comfortable with AP Trident, just because they actually drafted the legislation, they've been involved throughout, and the Washington State Fire Chief sort of endorses them. And they're a little bit cheaper as well. Overall, I think they said, they estimated it would be in the ballpark of $21,000 per year. I think after a year or two, we may not even need them anymore, but for now, I was pretty certain we need them. The reason that this came on this morning, I brought this to Mr. Day's attention, was considering that the deadline for this thing, the state in their approval letter gave me until November 30th to have all these numbers calculated out. And given such short notice, I figured that, and our opportunity to bring this in front of the council again is two weeks out, that tonight was probably better to bring it to your attention. So my recommendation request would be that we be allowed to go ahead and enter, allow Mr. Day to enter into an agreement with the AP Trident and just get this ball rolling so we can apply for this year, for the last year. It's a, her estimate was a little bit lower, $220,000 to $250,000, which she expects.
All right. Council? Any thoughts? Any questions?
A question from Mr. Day. Have you had a chance to read this contract? I mean, I barely opened it today, so I haven't had a chance to even look at it, see if there's anything in there that might catch us by surprise.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, if you will.
Mr. Guerrero, I have not had an opportunity to read this in full. I've kind of perused it at best. But I will certainly read it word for word before I sign it.
That's the only concern I have, obviously. I'm sure you're, obviously, Chief Fire Chief has read it, so I'm just concerned that there might be something in there that might catch us by surprise, and next thing you know, we're stuck with something that we don't want to.
I absolutely agree. No, I, we, this thing, we still have another week or so to probably hash it out. But considering, I didn't know if we were going to have time to get it, if we can stretch out there, actually, AP Trident's deadline is, I think they said there in the first week of October, that they're going to stop taking new clients for this project is the issue.
Any other questions? And this is for, you're hoping to use this particular audit service to, until we're able to do it on our own?
That's my, that's my plan, yes.
So at this point in the contract, it just says for a term of X number of years, so it's not set in stone yet. It says the above service provided by the consultant shall be completed for, completed for a fee of $13,500 plus 3% of gross GEMT proceeds for a term of, I guess, a determined number either in a contract or negotiate.
We haven't even negotiated. Like I said, this happened so fast, and the deadline was approaching so fast. I didn't even get this, and they just sent this to the email, to email me over the weekend.
Which is highlighted, which is kind of stood out right now. So obviously, you guys will be in the negotiation phase and decide how many years of.
Absolutely. I.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, if there is a motion to do this, I would ask that we insert the word negotiate, as we've done in the past, approving the city manager to negotiate and enter into a professional agreement, something of that nature.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I would move to, let's see here, I would move to authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations into a professional services agreement with AP Trident LLC to determine and certify the cost of ambulance transport services for the City of Sunnyside as defined pursuant to the GEMT program.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Boersma, seconds? Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Sounds like a good safety net as we move forward with that. Thank you for bringing that to us. All right. We've now moved to, uh, items from council members, I believe. Okay. So, um, I want to just quick make, if I can find it here, I want this just to go into the minutes for tonight of appointments to our subcommittees. I've talked with each of the council members prior. We'll have certificates and so forth drawn up and delivered in your boxes at such a time as, as convenient. But to the Subcommittee for Public Safety, I've asked Mr. Boersma, Mr. Hicks, and Mr. Stremmler to serve. For the Subcommittee on Finance and Administrative Services, I've asked Mr. Hicks, Mr. Restucci, and Mr. Guerrero to serve. Subcommittee on Public Works, I've asked Mr. Stremmler, Mr. Henry, and Ms. Hart will serve on that. The Subcommittee on Community Development, I've asked Hart, and Guerrero, and Boersma to serve on that committee. The Committee on Rules, Mr. Restucci, Hart, and Mr. Boersma, and.
Madam Mayor.
There's something about the committee of the whole, but I'm not sure what that is. Yes?
The committee of the whole is, is all of us.
Right. Thank you.
But the Rules Committee has specific membership requirements. It's you, the deputy mayor, and my, and one other member of council.
Okay. So, then, Mr. Boersma, do you mind if I go ahead and appoint Mr. Guerrero to that particular rules?
Do not mind.
Do you not mind? All right. And Mr. Guerrero, do you mind, do you mind to be on that particular committee? And Mr. Restucci, if you would also serve on that Rules Committee with us.
I would be happy to.
Thank you very much. All right. We'd hope to have some announcement on the parks and rec, but I think we still, Mr. Guerrero, you have.
Yes, we met this past Monday, and I failed to put an email together for you, Madam Mayor, but I will put this together here in the next couple of days and email it to you. We do have recommendations.
All right.
So we'll get that to you as soon as possible.
Okay. Very good. So we look forward to making that announcement. Okay. That's all I have for announcements, as far as commissions and boards at this time. Other reports, announcements, and questions, and our questions by council.
Madam Mayor, just have one.
Yes, Mr. Restucci.
Just want to inform council that as the AWC past president, I'll be attending the AWC Board of Directors meeting this Friday in CTAC. The board will be adopting its legislative priorities for the new legislative session. So if you've had an opportunity to review those or not, if you have any questions, or you want me to bring something up at the board meeting, please let me know.
Okay. I think I saw something about AWC in our emails, so that's probably in there. Thank you. Any, any other? Mr. Boersma, did I see a motion there?
I just, I don't know. I'm sure Mr. Fisher has already heard, but the neighbors and business owners on the corner of YVH and Six are excited to see the new lights going in and are asking me constantly, when will they be functioning? And so they're paying close attention, Mr. Fisher. They're really happy about this.
Yeah, and I am too, more than anybody. We're not really sure when they'll be operational. I did get an email, uh, I think it was last, I was out of the office last week, most, most of the week. And people now won't have, my understanding from email, they wouldn't have it energized until next week, once they got it set up. But from, I think it was Mr. Day may have mentioned they were on flashing red today. So that surprises me that they are already energized. People now must have circumvented their own process and came out.
It's the old lights that are on flashing red.
Oh, that's the ones. Okay. Gotcha. So anyway, so they'll change that, they'll switch that over sometime next week, middle of the week. So yeah, so it's, it won't take them long at this point.
I can answer the question when they ask me.
So once they get the signal heads up, then you'll see the li, the lines and all the lanes will get, will get done, because you really have to know where those signal heads are sitting on those, on those mast arms in order to get your, your lanes set up correctly. So, yeah, so good news.
Awesome. They look really pretty, too. I was very excited to see them today. Yeah. Anyone else?
I had one thing.
Yeah. Mr. Henry?
As a lot of us know, last week, we had a lot of testimony from the, um, the council, or I'm sorry, the city residents. And it kind of shocked me that the next day that our planning commission did not meet due to lack of stuff to talk about. And I'm sure you have a reason for that. But I would also like to point out that I'm, we made this motion in March of 20, or this year, March 26th, and it literally has not moved forward at all. So I would just like this to be done a little bit more professional. I'd also like to see it done before Christmas, because I'd hate to see the month spread out much further on that issue. And that's all I have on that.
Thanks. I can mention that the meeting is canceled. We do have a 24-hour requirement for agenda requirement. So, being as the meeting was the next day, we didn't have our 24-hour notice to be able to put that onto an agenda to meet, and there wasn't another item to meet on, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Thank you. Any other comments from council or questions or announcements? Mr. Stremmler?
I would just like to, uh, comment on things taking time, the community development resolutions, we've been working on that for over a year now. And that's just revising something that we already have, you know. But I, I had had some other issues. Today I noticed the code enforcement officer appeared he was participating in a funeral escort. Wondering what the deal was with that.
City Manager, are we aware of that?
Madam Mayor, I was not aware of that. I'll look into that.
Also, they had an email back in August 29, I believe it was, it was on that pellet operation out on Outlook Road, and it said that they were advised to stop operation right away, as I, I don't see it in here right now, but I believe that that's what they were told, is to cease operation and to be moved out in 30 days. I've gone by it a couple of times. The last time was today, which, the 30 days is here at the end of the week. Look like they're still manufacturing pellets and have not started moving. I'm a little surprised the city isn't aware that they didn't obey the first part of the order, which was to stop operation. I'm wondering why, how that slips through without being caught.
Do you have a question there? Did you?
Pardon?
Is there a question there as far as make, checking into that, or?
Well, yeah. Apparently, they haven't, the code enforcement or whoever's, because I think Public Works and Code Enforcement both went out there, I believe, in August. And they were, delivered a notice to stop operating and to be moved out in 30 days. They're still operating as of today, so apparently, nobody's checked to see if they stopped or not.
Mr. City Manager, do you have something on that, or?
I believe Mr. Ailing might be able to comment on it.
Mr. Day, Mayor, Mr. Stremmler, I do, I am aware that there was a notice served to clean up and to get rid of the operation, as it wasn't approved. I'd have to go back and check the date of the notice, as far as Mr. Driscoll had served the notice on them. The, the individual that's operating that business did inform me that he did find an alternate location and would be moving the entire facility. So I would somewhat anticipate judging, I don't want to make judgment, I would hope that they would clean everything up. Sometimes when businesses leave, they do leave stuff behind, though, so.
This is from Mr. Driscoll on the 29th of August, that the notice was delivered that afternoon.
Okay. So they have probably till the.
End of this week.
30th of September. They're not, they're still within their timeframe, they got a week, but they got a lot of work to do.
Well, but that, without taking time to read the whole email, I'm pretty sure they were also told to stop operating and basically start cleaning up, but they're still operating as of today yet.
That, I can't speak to that, but I do know that they are planning to move to other location undisclosed, but that they will be ceasing and moving off of that property and conforming, complying with the notice to be down, done on that property by the 3rd, I think it's the 30th of this month.
Okay.
So by the 10th, we should know what action was taken, if they don't move, if they don't follow.
Yeah. If they don't comply, then we follow the steps and procedures of the, of code enforcement as far as serving notice on them, additional notice, and then compliance that, it is a process, but yes, we will follow it to the, our, not being my department, I will recommend that that gets followed. I shouldn't be speaking out of school here.
Thank you very much.
Could we have a report on that at the next regular meeting, which I believe is the 8th?
Madam Mayor, I'll have the chief have a report ready for us at the October 10th.
We'll, we'll do what we can on that. It depends on the compliance. You know, many of these ordinances provide 7, 14, 30, 45-day compliance on our part before we can act. So it's going to be all dependent on that, I think, is whether we are going to be, provide an answer on the 10th or not.
All right.
We'll bring you an update on the 10th.
Some sort of an update will be appreciated. All right. Anyone else? Mr. Guerrero?
I do. So on east, in front of the post office, oh, there's a sidewalk section that, I think Mr. Fisher brought it up last time, that they had to take out some sections of, sorry, because it wasn't drained properly. Is there anything, any progress? I still see the cones, and that's part of the question, but the other question is, because the building, the bull bout right in that corner, the lane kind of shifted over towards the post office even closer. So I'm seeing pickups parked in parallel parking, not parallel parking, but sideways parking in front of the post office, and vehicles are going straight into the other lane to avoid hitting the back end of those vehicles. Are we, I know we talked about briefly about doing something with the parking or extending that section there?
We were gonna, what we're gonna do is, and me and Jaime Alvarez, the street supervisor, have already discussed putting signs up that those will only be either compact car parking or no truck parking, and try to get the larger, longer crew cab trucks into the parking lot, which is the plan.[1774.88] The alternative is we'll parallel park it, and we know how people feel about that.
Right.
So.
Yeah, they're excited.
But the idea is to get the trucks into the parking lot. I would like to just take all the parking away, to be honest with you, as far as the street, streetwise, but that's probably worse than trying to parallel.
What kind of teeth do we have as far as enforcing no pickups parked in that section? Because people are going to park no matter what, and, I mean, I see a concern, people are going to be basically, it's a matter of time if you put them to head collision.
And we've got code that supports it, that says, you know, that
Compact vehicles only?
Right.
So there's potential
There's a process to that, I mean, it's long and painful. But, you know, at this point, it would be a suggestion. But, but yeah, eventually, we'd like to, you know, either parallel park it or just get rid of it, is the plan.
Can we put that on our council request status, please, so that will be, don't lose sight of it?
How would you like that to be worded?
So, I guess.
Yeah, we can just, yeah, you know, post office parking, I guess, is, we all know what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Been talking about it for years, so.
And go to parallel. All right.
One last thing, I know in the past, we brought up the light in the corner where Safeway is at, that was turned down to like a four-way stop.
Right.
Have we looked into that any further?
We haven't, I just, we're just, I'm still flipping busy. HLA is aware of it, we've had several conversations about it.
So it's in the radar, it sounds like?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Anyone else with any comments for reports or announcements or questions? No? Moving on then to the council request status report. We have a number of items on there still. We've, I think what we need to change the status there on the staff directed to say we have the consultant and we have some dates set for secret shopping and results, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, that is correct, they'll be here the week of December 10th. I don't have my calendar in front of me, but I believe it's Monday, they will start, they'll do three days of secret shopping. And then on Friday, the 14th, I believe, there will be a community meeting at the fire station, and it's basically a conference, and they're going to invite business people, yourselves, anyone who's interested in seeing what their results are and their recommendations. They will then give recommendations out publicly, and then they will follow that up with a full report to you within 90 days after they get input from the public as well.
Okay. I think we should put that on the status report, just to
Yeah, I noticed that.
So remember the dates, so we can keep that ahead of us. We're still setting it same with the Roland Avenue, nothing new there to report?
That's correct.
I imagine. The community development, I know that Mr. Ferguson was here, he's talked about the resolutions, currently working on the ordinance, is, are we still at that point? I know he brought it to us.
Madam Mayor, he brought it to us, his position is now write a simple ordinance and then retain the resolution. The question he posed to council is, how do you want the approval process to be? Okay? You have to be very careful, and again, as to how you structure this. This is the, this is the question he needs from council. Do you want the full council to approve all of these, sitting as a committee as a whole? And again, the, you have to determine how much money you're going to spend, you're restricted by law as to what you're allowed to do, you can only do public structures, you can't build private fences and various other things. So that's where he was looking for direction from you. You can establish a standalone board or commission, similar to the planning commission, to take all this action, review it, authorize it and approve it, or you do it yourself. So that's the question he asked when he was down here last, last time, so he's, he's looking for a little bit of direction from you. We can certainly have him come back again and have another discussion on it and see what you guys want to do. But I think he gave it to you and wants you guys to, he wants to make sure we're all singing on the same sheet of music, so to speak.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is this something that the community development subcommittee could work on in their first meeting?
I would think that that would be an excellent first topic to be, to be working on and gathering that information. I absolutely agree, see how we want to go forward with that process. Is that, so as soon as you guys are able to meet and begin work on that, oh yeah, I'm on that, too. So, us, all of us.
That's when we need to meet, as long as it's not this week.
All right, well, let's, let's communicate via email and set up a time for that. And we'll, that'll be our first topic, and then we can move forward with that. Okay, so let's see, we're still waiting to, can't we just pour some cement and do the handicap? No.
Absolutely not.
Shaking his head now. So we're still waiting for some money.
We'd get in big trouble if we did that, but yes, ma'am, we have to find some money.
Find some money, and I take it we haven't yet.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I know that council has a lot on its plate right now, and obviously you just appointed subcommittees tonight, so there's going to be more, more work for council. So on the small cell 5G ordinance, national ordinance that we're looking at, why don't we just put it on the council status report right now?
All right.
And I'll work with staff in the manager's office and get something
That's the small, small cell G.
Small cell 5G.
Small cell 5G, thank you, let's get that on there then. All right. And Mr. Ristucci, you'll take, work with that. All right, since we don't have anything on that, and the tree replacement plan, that's, we're just work, we're working on those. Anything else that we want to put on the status report at this time? No? So we've added some action there and a couple of new, new topics, excellent. Okay, planning, agendas, planning schedule, Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, for October 1, there is a comment in here, it says renegotiate public defender contracts, I'm not sure why that's on there, I think it's just a
Placeholder?
Placeholder for me, because I don't know that, I don't remember ever, and perhaps I'm wrong, but I don't remember any reason why you guys would want to be negotiating contracts with public defenders, so, as a workshop. But we do want to have a workshop for the budget, is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I have brought my calendar.
We will be having a discussion on moving the budget forward and starting your hearings, I mean, workshops, excuse me.
Budget workshop.
And that's all we have for October 1st.
Okay. And moving along there, of course, now we'll have both the new and the old exec sitting city council, Sunnyside Court at our, our October 8.
That is correct.
All right. All right, and it looks like we just have some regular things coming up as far as official newspaper and the, and then we'll bring that defended, a public defender contract later next month. All right. And, all right, is there anything else that anyone wants to have on the agenda at this point?
I need to ask for, excuse that, for October 8th, I'm going to be out of the state, so won't be able to attend the October 8th regular meeting.
All right. Any objections from the council?
No objection, Madam Mayor.
You're free to go.
Thank you.
All right, that being said, anything else on the planning schedule? All right, not hearing anything there. We have items from city manager and department heads before we go into executive session.
Madam Mayor, if I can turn it over to my department heads first?
I have no further.
You don't want to tell us thank you for doing that?
I said thank you, thank you.
You can say thank you again.
Thank you. Twice.
I just, we'll report that the planning commission is scheduled to meet and will be hearing in October meetings, the second Tuesday of the month, so we will be meeting this October.
Thank you, Jane.
I have nothing further.
So I obviously would like to ask for participation at the Monday workshop meeting, and my plan is to go over revenues at that meeting, and I'm going to bring out the kind of book nerd in me right now, and I've actually brought a textbook, and I want you to all just consider this as we talk about revenues. So permanent income, also called sustainable income or reoccurring income, is the stable average income that a business is expected to earn over its life, given the current state of business conditions. We are in dire straits in our general fund where we have one day of operating income. We seriously need to take hard looks at our revenue and sustainability. I would love to be able to put a ramp in at the community, at every place we can put a ramp, but at Senior Center. But until someone comes across with the money to pay for that, we have to look at every item as, where's the revenue first, instead of can we do this? Yes, we can commit to things, but we cannot do them without a revenue source. So that's what I'm looking at, is sustainability. How can we make our revenue sustainable to match our increasing expenses? So at that workshop, I would like permission to really focus on revenues first, find out where we are and what we have. And then Don Day has actually told us as department heads, do not ask for anything unless you can come forward with the revenues for it. So if you are asking for a ramp, Shane, where's the money to build the ramp? Same thing if I come forward with increases in salaries, because we've negotiated a CBA that was, you know, negotiated last year, and we have a contractual increase, that is an increase to our expenditures that is already been agreed to. So we have to count on, if we've said this union gets a 3% raise, we can't find a 1% increase in revenues to pay for that 3% increase. So think about that as you guys go home, and think about how we pay for our services. Where are we lacking? And what I'm seeing is, is we have continually raised expenses and not matched our revenues to those expenses, and now we're in a situation where we have three funds that are in dire straits. So I'm going to be coming at you this time with some really hard things, and some really things that you're going to have to say to yourself, how does this impact my pocketbook? How does this impact our city? And how do we become sustainable? Because these are the truths, we are not sustainable in our general fund, and we have to make some changes. So my plan is at this workshop to bring forward the revenues, and I will really be focusing on revenues. And I will have some expenditure numbers, they will be very broad, they will not be line item numbers, so you're not going to go in and look at the finance department's offices and operating expenses, you'll look at the finance department as a whole. I will be presenting some salary numbers that are broad numbers. I'm going to look at what are we contractually obligated to pay for next year that we've already committed to in union negotiations. You will be asked to make some hard choices, and it will not be fun this time, I don't have any way to make it fun, but we have to be sustainable. Otherwise, we have to then really look at cuts, because that's where it's going to come down to. Raise the revenues, and we may raise the revenues and still have to cut expenses somewhere. So I'm just letting you guys know ahead of time, I'll probably try to bring something nice to make us feel a little better, but it isn't going to feel good. It is not going to feel like you're sitting at the table and we have sunshine and roses, and, you know, we do live in the Sunshine City, but this budget workshop is going to be harder than you've dealt with in the past. So I just want you to kind of be prepared, think about things that you've observed, think about things that just impact your own pocketbook, think about things that you ask of other people. And I'll just give you guys one example, I've thought about this, and I thought, well, what is something that's different at my house than anyone here in Sunnyside? And I'll tell you, I have a 96 gallon garbage can, it costs me $25 for that garbage can. Does anyone know our rate for the same size can here in Sunnyside?
I think it's eight.
Yeah. And that fund is upside down, that fund does not have a sustainable revenue, and last year, we voted to not increase the rates because we didn't want to pass along the fee from Yakima County's increase to their dumping fee, and we did not pass that, so we absorbed it, and we didn't have it to absorb. So there's things like that that we really need to take a hard look at. Are we competitive with other cities? But not only are we competitive, are we able to sustain our garbage fund? And it's going to hurt, it's going to hurt. So I just want you guys to be prepared for those things, be prepared for hopefully the questions that citizens have, and I hope to provide you with enough information that when they ask you the question, you can let them know where we've, where we've been with this and why we're here. Okay? So with that note also, I'm sure we'll need a second budget workshop. I'm not sure when the council is available, but I would like to have it sometime early in October if possible. Since this is going to be a hard budget, I want to make sure we have plenty of time to discuss, and if we need one more workshop, we still could. Former Mayor Ristucci mentioned that they have had special meetings and done this on December 31st or December 30th.
29th.
29th.
29th of December, nine, 10 years ago, something like that.
And I'm hoping that that's not where we, I'm hoping that's not where we end up. So I would really like to, tonight, if you have the ability to schedule a second budget hearing, or a budget meeting, I would like to schedule that, if not, I will leave it up to the council. And that is my bad news for the night, sorry.
Bad news bears.
Next.
Yeah.
How, when you say, Madam Mayor, can I?
Yes.
When you say how bad, I'm one of the sitting members here who laid off police officers and firefighters, or is that what you're talking about, is that how bad we're talking about?
I'm talking that our general fund literally had $52,000 left at the end of last year, and that was including the contingency fund that's been set aside. And our street fund had a negative balance, and in all reality, our other funds supported that negative balance, because we look at everything's overall. Same thing with garbage funds, same thing with the ambulance fund, so we have four funds, three they're operating in a negative, and one that is just barely sustainable at $52,000 carryover for one year. And I'm not saying to, you know, I am not saying this is what we're doing. What I'm saying is, we have options, and I've heard it tonight, I heard Transportation Benefit District, we've asked for that several times, I think it's time to put that on the table, pass it, and move forward with it. The very sad thing about the TBD is it will not happen for revenues in 19, even if we pass it and get it through, it takes time for that to process. So even if we forward think, we won't have that money in hand until well into 2019 and maybe mostly into 2020. So there are other ways, and I'm going to bring forward some ways that we can raise revenues, but it's going to hurt pockets, it's going to hurt people's water bills, it's going to hurt, I mean, because obviously, just from me saying that the garbage fund is upside down, definitely means we need to raise the garbage rates. That is not, that is a given, just to make sure we don't have a deficit again. Or what's another alternative? Do we ask the garbage company to take over the billing and let them do that? Is that something we want to do? Is that another alternative? I mean, there's a lot of alternatives to think of. So is that a way for us to alleviate that expense? I don't know.
No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your honesty and your candor.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, if I had a magic wand, I'd wave it and we'd just be all solid and wouldn't have to worry about it. But we've been, we've been in this situation for quite some time, I just think now it's coming down to where we really need to take a hard look.
Thank you.
I think on a little lighter note, I'm just here to report that we, Sunnyside Police Department partnered with quite a few of our community services that we currently have in service in and around our community, including the fire department and Sunnyside United Unidos and Nuestra Casa and places like that. And we held a community voice forum up at the north end of town at Kiwanis Park over the weekend, and it was pretty well attended, even though we had some competing interest with the fair going on in Yakima, and also with harvest season, it makes it tough for everybody. But we, we just wanted to put something together for the community in a location where experienced some recent violence and to get the word out that we are here to partner with them and that we haven't forgotten them in any way, shape or form. So that went pretty well. So we continue to push forward on that and connecting with the community even more, hopefully to get a few more of those in, not necessarily outside, however, some forums done before the end of the year, so, but it went well.
Awesome, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I only have one other item to bring up, two other items, excuse me. We will be working on the marketing video, okay? I think you already did the one introduction. So that's on its way, they will be here in October to do the shoot, and so I think that's going to happen pretty good, I think it's going to work out pretty well for us. Secondly, I may have to take a trip to New Mexico, I will be here for the October 1 and October 8 meetings, but I haven't had an opportunity to talk to too many of you of I've talked to Mr. Carr a little bit, but I'd rather talk to that in private, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So if you have any questions or something like that, it's just something that I might have to run down there for.
Okay.
So.
All right.
That's all we have.
That's all we have. And with that, we will, oh, we do need to schedule a, thank you.
Oh, yes. Ms. Alba did ask that we could schedule a second workshop in October. The first one will be cursed the first. We'll go, we'll try to go over some revenues. We might delve into some of the smaller funds, maybe break into the general fund slightly, a little bit on expenditures like mine and, you know, some of the smaller departments. I don't think that we'll get to the PD and public works and stuff like that, but we might be able to start breaking into that. But we would need at least one more in October. The 15th, I may not be here. Okay, that might be a time when I'm gone. So that can certainly happen while I'm gone, but I'm sure that my staff can get through that. But.
Do we, do we want to do them on a Monday night since it's when we normally?
You can do them anytime.
Anytime.
We can do them on a weekend if you want to. We just need to start getting these, these things knocked out.
Madam Mayor, it might be better that we just have the city clerk poll the council via email and find out what dates work best for us.
I think that's probably a good idea. Solid idea.
We can do that. We'll send something out tomorrow. We'll give you some options.
Right. I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Oh, and I forgot one other thing, Madam Mayor. I sent you an email report on the Cinco de Mayo expenses.
Right.
And I didn't hear anything back, so I assumed that everything was okay there. So I told Amy not to worry about coming.
Okay.
So let me know if that's different, if I misunderstood you.
I was fine with it.
All my questions were answered and I was.
Me too.
Really impressed with how much they spent and.
Very good.
The broadness of that outreach. So that was good.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure, and I forgot to mention that, and then, just so you knew that we told her not to worry about coming unless, unless I called for her. So I hadn't heard anything. Very good. That's all we have, ma'am.
That's all we have. Well, at this time, then, we will move into executive session for, I believe, what we had advertised is 30 minutes to discuss. I'm trying to find the thing. So I can read it right. We'll go into executive session for 30 minutes, evaluate qualifications of applicants for public employment, reference RCW 42.30.110 in parentheses one, in parentheses G. And right now, it's at 8:26.
Madam Mayor, point of order.
Point of order.
State law requires that you, you tell the public, the chapter and verse of the RCW, how much time and whether or not any action will be taken afterward.
Well, time, 30 minutes. I've mentioned the RCW already. And I don't believe any.
Yes, ma'am.
Believe action might be taken.
And action, and action, some action will be, may be taken, following the executive session. Did we get it? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much for clarification. So 8:26. Thank you very much. And somebody, Jackie, keep time for it?
We have some action before us, so...
Madam Mayor, I would move that we elevate the four identified finalists to set up interviews for October 13th and to set up a meet and greet for October 12th. Date and time to be determined.
Time and location?
Time and location to be determined.
I'll second that.
Okay. I don't believe there's any, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye too vote aye. Those opposed say same sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay.
Would move to adjourn, Madam Mayor.
Without objection, we are adjourned.